Most part, we have done pretty well with that, except on one occasion where we have done that. School board action will still occur during the school board meetings that are typically the second meeting of the month, except for the months of August, September, and October due to budget adoption cycle. We need two school board meetings a month to do that in order to meet all the timelines as directed to us by the state of Indiana for that. So tonight, I apologize for this screen, but for the audience, the screen over here on this side is working and will follow along with the presentations we have. For school board, I was telling Mr. Roth that we're setting in this configuration in large part for people to be able to view us all, but that camera at the back of the room will pick up the front side of this and this camera like tonight are for our two guests that are making presentations. The community online can also see them in addition to that. Okay? So this is the configuration that we had. I apologize for the screen up front. Board, you have everything that we're going to see here in your board packet along the way with that. And so let's go ahead and get started. And Mr. Roth, you lead us off tonight with board comments and statements. Okay?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Trout. What I'm going to read is a statement that will be posted tomorrow or the day after to the school corporation's website. And I want to thank those that assisted in putting this together, but I'm going to just read this statement and it's regarding the Scott Baumgartner situation. On March 19th, 2024, criminal charges were filed against former HCCSC business manager Scott Baumgartner regarding his theft of approximately $462,000. The filing of these charges came after a six-month-long investigation by the Indiana State Police and the Indiana State Board of Accounts. Members of the Board of School Trustees first became aware of the possibility of financial wrongdoing by Mr. Baumgartner when the Indiana State Board of Accounts contacted Superintendent John Trout in October 2023. We were presented with the audit report from the State Board of Accounts on February 27th, 2024, but signed confidentiality agreements as requested by the State Board of Accounts, which meant we were not able to discuss their audit report until after it had been finalized and posted to their website. When first presented with the audit report, all board members were shocked that someone in Mr. Baumgartner's position would commit such heinous acts and deprive the students at HCCSC of the use of these funds. To think that someone supposedly dedicated to the students of Huntington County would do something like this is truly disheartening. Some might question how this could happen, and we sympathize with that sentiment. Mr. Baumgartner was our business manager, a bonded employee who was hired in August 2018 when Mr. Randy Harris was superintendent. The system of checks and balances we had in place at that time included the appointment of a treasurer who was to review, approve, and record all financial transactions with additional oversight by the HCCSC superintendent. During Mr. Baumgartner's acts of theft, the treasurer was Adet Eckert and the superintendent was Mr. Chad Doherty, both of whom have left their employment with HCCSC, with Mr. Doherty resigning in June 2022 and moving to South Carolina. Additional safeguards included the requirement that a gift card recipient sign a form of acknowledgement. Unfortunately, Mr. Baumgartner did not follow this policy and disregarded HCCSC's internal financial control policies, bypassing other members of the business office staff and overriding financial account systems processes. Neither the treasurer or superintendent reported Mr. Baumgartner's failure to follow the policy to members of the School Board of Trustees or to the ISBOA. A similar system of checks and balances was in place in the Marion School Corporation, and their treasurer immediately reported Mr. Baumgartner's suspicious activity, which allowed them to stop his acts of theft almost immediately. Unfortunately, that system failed at HCCSC due to a lack of following proper procedures by key employees, all of whom are no longer employed at HCCSC. We regret that this happened, but we'll continue to do everything we can to provide the best experience for our students, our teachers, and the staff at HCCSC. In response to these unfortunate events, the board has approved the complete overhaul of the business office by Superintendent Trout and the creation of the position of chief financial officer and the hiring of Valerie Moore to fill that role. We have also instituted a no-gift card policy at HCCSC. Please understand that none of the ISBOA audits revealed any significant problems after Mr. Baumgartner's departure. In terms of recovering the misappropriated funds, we are working with our insurance carrier to recover the maximum amount possible from coverage that was in place at that time. We will also vigorously pursue recovery through the criminal and civil court system with the goal of having HCCSC made whole and the maximum amount of misappropriated funds recovered. Your Board of School Trustees remains committed to providing a high-quality education to the students of Huntington County and will continue to meet all challenges with integrity and transparency. Many current board members have served multiple terms and have had the opportunity to be a part of exciting changes and improvements, such as the construction of the new Roanoke Elementary School, the addition to the Learning Center, and the stadium adjacent to Huntington North High School. We have also faced challenges such as redistricting, the closure of Northwest and Lancaster Elementary Schools, and other difficult decisions. We firmly believe that we can meet this latest challenge as part of our duties and responsibilities as your elected Board of School Trustees. And again, that will be posted to the school website tomorrow or Thursday.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roth. Next agenda item that we have this evening is glad to welcome to our table our presenters this evening, Dr. Matt Fleeger and Alicia Simons. To that, welcome, Mr. Simons, also here this evening. Got to meet you tonight. There has been, over since my tenure here, a lot of discussion and a lot of going on in the community regards to the water situation at Andrews. And since we have a building out there with approximately 400 students there, I thought it was enormously important to bring people representing our health department here this evening to explain to you all the details of what's going on with regards to testing there. From time to time, I fielded some phone calls, some emails, talked to people in our community, asking these specific questions, and I felt it was time, especially since Lieutenant Governor Crouch was here, we could go today, as a matter of fact, investigating this situation, that we spend some time at our work session going through this. This is ample opportunity for you to also have dialogue with people from our health department, to have this conversation also with them. Okay? So we've allotted 45 minutes for this. I'll have Dr. Matt and Alicia explain their role, what they do, and then we're going to get into the weeds. This is my second time, Alicia's seeing that. If there's a quiz, I'll do my darndest to pass it this time within this because there's a lot of detailed information in here this evening. So the community, you'll have to watch that screen there, up there to my left, to your right. But Board, you have this same presentation in there, and so Alicia, Dr. Matt, we'll turn it over to you. Okay?
Yeah, so I'm going to start just, you know, I'm Dr. Matt Fleeger, the public health officer at the Health Department. And just the kind of the broad overview of the situation is we know that, you know, this issue of Andrews Town Water has been going on since the early 90s when a factory there that's now owned by Raytheon was dumping detergents into the ground. We're just going to call them VOCs, volatile organic compounds, because it's way easier than pronouncing all of these different compounds there are. And they were dumping them into the ground, which then leached into the wells. And they had put into place some systems called airstrippers, which we're going to go into to ensure that those weren't getting into the water supply. Well, in 2020, there was an issue with some of those airstrippers failing and then going to a different well, which didn't have that, which then released some of these VOCs into the water. And that's what kind of really amplified the issues as we knew them in 2020. Then moving forward, there is now litigation between the town of Andrews and Raytheon, which we're not really getting into because that's an ongoing litigation issue around what is the ultimate solution? What's the long-term plan for the water supply in Andrews? And as you've seen in the news, Huntington City is trying to figure out if they can provide a solution versus a new well and on and on. And that's not necessarily the scope of this conversation. What we're here to discuss is what does the water look like now and safety for that. And so in light of kind of continual news organizations kind of bringing to light these issues, wanted to be able to bring this information to you, to you all. So with that, I'm going to let Alicia, our environmental health specialist at the Health Department, kind of give the presentation and talk a little bit more with you.
Can I go and hand those that way?
Yeah.
So what he's going to hand out, it actually is in the presentation, it's just a little bit easier, you know, this way. I didn't know that you guys would actually have it in front of you and you can scribble on it, whatever you need to do. So I'm going to kind of look back and forth here a little bit.
Okay, yeah, you're going to have to look over your shoulder.
That's fine.
Apologize.
So like he said, I'm the environmental health specialist at the Health Department. I've been there a little over a year now. I've been in the environmental field about 10 years now. I kind of just love it. Water's my jam, so.
Would you explain, Alicia, some of your background, your education? I think that's very important for the community to know.
So I have a master's in environmental management and policy as well as a bachelor's in environmental science. I've worked in environmental remediation. I've worked in natural resources, conservation, habit, my tongue would work today, habitat conservation, wildlife rehabilitation, just pretty much water conservation. I've done the Indiana Watershed Leadership Academy, pretty much if I could get paid to go to school, I probably would, so I won't rattle off any more certifications.
Thank you. That's important to know.
So the next slide there pretty much just goes through basically how the EPA determines what's a contaminant, how they determine there's a contaminant, how it gets put on the list, and then how they go into monitoring what they determine, what they determine as a maximum limit and then from there. So this is your, just kind of some basic definitions. The EPA determines what's a maximum contaminant level. They determine what is safe, I don't want to say safe, but what they consider safe for us to drink without causing issues to the human body per se. Of course, the goal is always zero, but they say this is a safe level. And then you'll see some more numbers down as we get a little farther, it'll say BDL, which is below detection level. When you send a sample to a lab, there's always a detection limit that they have, and a lot of times our samples will go in there and they'll be too low to actually detect, but scientists aren't comfortable saying that it's a zero. You don't like me turning around anymore?
No. I've seen it. You can use mine if you just scroll up. Okay?
Thank you. So the next one, they went through and determined which VOCs are volatile organic compounds, went through three phases. So the ones that are bothering Andrews, I kind of basically listed those off. The first one was our vinyl chlorides. Those were listed on the EPA list in 1989, and then the other three that I'm not going to try and butcher were put on the list in 1992. So they were definitely listed well before we were having, you know, our issues in Andrews, so they should have known not to do those. And we're just going to have a quick math lesson, you know, milligram versus microgram. Milligrams are 1,000 times smaller than a milligram. So we kind of have there, and then a part per million versus a part per billion. So basically to think of that is concentrations in water can be described as both. Basically, what you're going to want to think about is a part per million is basically one cup in your basics, is in a normal-sized swimming pool. So when we talk about all of the numbers that we're going to talk about for Andrews Water, it's all in micrograms, so there'll be parts per billion, not parts per million. So our first graph that we have here is our TCEs, which I know everyone's worried about because they're the most dangerous. All of them on your graph that we have, and this is where I got all my numbers from, are below detection level. So the EPA has a .005 limit. All of them were 180% below our EPA levels, so we're good and healthy with those there.
Can you explain a little bit, because when I met with you last time, you explained this to me, below detection level. Could you kind of draw that out for us a little bit about what that actually means to us? I know this is a math lesson, and I know you're doing a great job with it, but as a school board looking at this for the first time, kind of get into weeds with us a little bit of what that below-detection level actually is stating there.
When you send a sample into the lab, they'll say, so on TCEs, your detection level is point, I think it's .01 or .1. It's point, or it's one. I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head.
Right, it's not important to that.
I have them all on my desk.
Right.
But so your detection level is where the machines can actually read that there is that chemical in the water.
Right.
And so below-detection level means that it was detected in there, but it wasn't, they can't be 100% sure that that's the accurate number that it was detected at because it was detected at such a low number that it's not an accurate detection.
That's what I wanted you to say right there.
Yeah, that's, they can't just, they can't say, oh, so it was found at .258 because it's lower than our detection level, basically. They don't want to say that it was zero because there was something detected, but they can't say that that was 100% the number. So even the numbers that I have on this graph, they can't be 100% determined as accurate, so that's why it says below-detection level on all of these numbers. But we are, like I said, 180% below the EPA level, which is tremendously amazing to me.
This may be the wrong time to ask, but I'm going to, since I'm thinking about it. Do the, do all these chemicals, since some of this contamination happened in the 90s, do these maintain their strength like forever? Or how does, I mean, do they break down and go away? They get lesser?
You know, to be honest with you, I don't know. I would have to look that up and get back with you.
Okay, that's fine. I just wondered if it was much, much worse, well was shut down, it got a lot worse in there, and then that well was turned on. Shouldn't have been, I get it. But does, is, if it maintains its strength, I guess I'd worry about the rest of the contamination becoming more.
You have done quarterly, there has been quarterly, I think how I'd answer that is what you explained to me with over duration of time with the samples that are, we're sending to IDEM within that. I mean, I think that's how, that would be the answer to that question based on what you have said before.
Yeah, so this site has been quarter, has been tested quarterly since 1993. I actually have 25,000 pages that I went through to look at all of this data, and it has been tested quarterly, and you can see the numbers have gone down. So I don't know if that means that the strength of the chemicals have gone down or the amount has gone down.
All right.
So I can't, I just, I don't want to give you inaccurate information.
That's okay. I may not have asked the question correctly, but I knew where I was going with it.
You're kind of, you're kind of asking, will that well ever be safe again, or will there ever be a point?
Right. I mean, do we really have any, any hope in what's left in there, or is really just, we need a new option?
Right. Correct.
Yeah. So, yeah, I just, I don't know. I can look into it and get back with you if you want.
That'd be great. I'm, like I said, I'm okay with your answer.
Okay. Our next graph is our vinyl chlorides, which anything that says chloride, again, I know everyone thinks, oh, chlorine's safe in my pool. It's not safe in our drinking water all the time. Our next one is our vinyl chlorides, which again are below our detection level by 90% below EPA levels. And I only, again, on, for the school, I only had three years' worth of data to go off of. I didn't have the full amounts, which I'm sure they do somewhere, just in the data that I had. I didn't have it. So we were 90% below on that one. On our diocloroethylene, we were 199% below EPA standards for our three-year average, which you can see that up in 2020, when that first failed, we were really, really high, and then they got it fixed and we went right back down. And they were really, really low on these. Again, these are all in micrograms as well. Our bromodichloromethylene or methane, now if I could read, that would be great too, right? We were 167% below our EPA standards, which again is really good for a three-year average. Our total trihalomethane, again, it's kind of spiky, which that one can go up or down either way. And these all will change depending on the amount of rainfall we have per year, the amount of drought we have, because these will all leach through the ground. So if it's, you know, if it's up in the ground, then it rains, it'll kind of go through the soil, that kind of thing. The limestone in our soil will absorb some of it, but it can only absorb so much. So whatever can still leach through and get into our groundwater, that's why you'll see like on our more rainfall years, the numbers will be higher. On our more drought-driven years, they'll be a little lower because there's not so much getting through. We're 96% below our EPA standards. And then the next graph there is the graph that I gave you guys in there, so it's a little easier for you to read. And then the sheets behind that are the standards that the EPA sets for the chemicals that we have, so you guys can kind of see where I got my numbers from as well. So, you know, I'm not pulling numbers out of thin air. Again, our last graph here is, they're tested quarterly. So Raytheon owns the land now, and they are on what's called the voluntary remediation program through the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. They hired StanTech, which is an independent company, to go out and draw drinking water samples from various points all over Andrews. They then sample those points, you know, by a standardized procedure, which I've done all of the sampling before as well. It's a very, very standard procedure, and when you take them to the lab, the lab will know if you didn't do it right, and they'll automatically reject those if they're not the right temperature, if they weren't turned in in a standard amount of time, if they're not in the right bottles. There's a lot of different things that will say that these samples aren't, you know, able to be tested. And then you have to go back out and completely retest those samples again. So when you're, when you're sampling these, you're very, very, you know, good, you know, you wear your gloves, you, you know, just do it exactly as you need to do. Those samples are then taken to the Element Lab in Fort Wayne, which again is another independent lab. They're licensed and certified, I believe, nationwide because we've used them before. I've used them before in the past. Those results are then sent directly to IDEM, to both the remediation, the head of remediation down there, and their drinking water department. Those results are reviewed by them, and then IDEM will let us, like, I believe they send the results from those directly to you guys, whether it is a pass or a fail. And I have not received any failing drinking water results in my office, which I would get notified of a failing result as well. And then the last thing there is the airstrippers, and there is currently one in place. It comes, so your drinking water's pulled up, it goes into the airstripper, and then from the airstripper, it goes into the actual...
Water supply.
Well, it goes into the treatment facility as well, and then into the water supply. So your water's actually still being cleaned twice. So it puts air through the water, and there's a whole bunch of different chemical processes that go through there, you know, oxidizers and carbon filters, and it's a big, huge, those airstrippers are about as big as this area here with the table set up and a whole bunch of different filters and air that goes through there and that kind of thing. So it pushes air through there in different ways, and it strips, helps strip all those, you know, different chemicals through there. And then the VOCs, you know, because they can evaporate through, you know, it's, they all have different temperatures that they'll evaporate at, and it's almost all different. Then some of them will evaporate at 60 degrees, some will evaporate at 70, some at 90, so it all just depends. And those airstrippers will take all of that out of there, and then the air, you know, kind of pulls them out and goes from there. So, does anybody have any? I know I went through that a little fast, so.
No. Matt, question's first.
Curious to know if... ...question on the ground, if it ever goes away or not. In the dirt world where I come from, we go into hazmat site, we dig it up, we lay the dirt on plastic, let it air out, they test it, and after it sits on plastic for so long, then it's considered non-contaminated and stuff. So I would be curious to know, you know, whether it would ever flush out, kind of like you talking on the one graph where, you know, the, you can see the spikes with the rain and stuff, and, you know, does it eventually flush out or is it a permanent?
I know that, I don't know the exact year because it was before me, and IDEM's kind of not giving me all of their data yet. They did go through at one point and remove 13, 14 feet of soil from that, and then they put a clay cap in there. But I don't know how, I don't know exactly how far down they went, so like I said, there is a clay cap put in there, which generally is like, if you're going to build a Play-Doh fort, you know, you put that, we do it a lot in remediation. We'll go through and dig down so far to where we believe the contamination stops, which most of the time isn't deep enough, and we'll put what's called a clay cap in there. It's between five and 10 feet deep, and it tries to stop the water from seeping through, so it has to go across and do a little more filtration before it can go down. And that was done out there, but again, we don't know if it was done deep enough, if they actually got the whole site, how much of it was actually done. So that's kind of, I'm waiting on all of that data to come up from IDEM for sure.
Where do they do the testing from? Do they have same sites? Do they go to pick a house? Do, how, where do they, where do they pull their samples from the same spot all the time or random?
So, so I do know that all of the test sites that they test the drinking water from is all the same sites, so they can keep test, you know, keep a graph going. As for vapor intrusion, to see if anything was coming out of the ground, they've tested 91 different sites all across Andrews, and the school was one of them. Again, I don't have those actual numbers yet. They're trying to get all of that data to me. So again, that's all been tested. I'm waiting on, I went and did my own drinking water samples. The state lab is really, really backed up right now. I'm waiting on those results to come back to me as, you know, it's been three weeks now, so hopefully I'll have those this week and I can get those, you know, out to John and to you guys as well, so you can know what those are.
Good. Thank you, Matt. Other questions for the board?
Is, you said that this was, this has been tested every quarter for, for ever, essentially? All of the schools tested like that, or is it just the ones that are on wells? Or how does that work?
I am trying to find that out right now. So my office was kind of a disaster when I moved into it, and I'm still sorting through some files, so I'm trying to get information on the schools right now to find out where we're at.
But mainly, the schools rely on the source of where they're getting their water from, so all of the city water, all the schools on city water are relying on the data that are coming from the city, and just like Salamone is hooked into Warren and the such. So nobody's on their own private well. Everybody's hooked into a municipality system.
So what we do is we rely on municipalities, on their water test, then which goes to IDEM, and then we, then if there is any problems whatsoever, then we are notified, which we have never been notified. However, at Northwest and at Lancaster, being on their own well and septic system, then that was our responsibility. So I've been at a smaller district before where we tested regularly because we had our own well, septic, et cetera. And so we marked, we watched that carefully within that. Now, we are relying totally on the municipalities for all of our buildings within that. I'm glad you asked that question. Other comments, questions? And I have a couple, but I want to make sure you guys get every opportunity to ask whatever on your mind or hearts.
If all of these data points that you just showed us are all within tolerances that are acceptable, maybe not good, but acceptable, why has this become such a hot topic in the last few years? Why, why is it such a thing all of a sudden?
I think the answer...
I mean, it's been going on for 30 years, so.
It's been going on. It's been going on for a long time. I think that there's a desire for a long-term fix, and they don't want another repeat of 2020, where there were chemicals that came through because of issues with the airstripping system and which well to use and the such. And so there is a desire to get a long-term fix, and the wells that are currently in place are not going to be, for the people of Andrews, a good option long-term. So that's kind of why it's become more of a, and I, the town of Andrews would like to see the people responsible for damaging their wells to fix the problem. And so that's where the litigation comes into place. Again, going to a long-term issue. What we're trying to show is that the, just the short-term present, we're, we're, it's not like we need to turn the water... This was kind of the question, do we need to turn the water fountains off or not? And based on these numbers, and as we keep monitoring them, and they can see like every single month they're getting monitored, that we're, we're doing okay at this point. And we would see if there becomes an issue like it did in 2020, we can see that there could become, we'd know.
I believe we're talking, Kevin, about two separate issues here. One issue this evening was, I wanted to reassure you as a board and the people who send their students to Andrews, that their kids are safe. There is data upon data upon data to, to say that, okay? I, on the other hand, do not want to downplay the need for a long-term solution for the town of Andrews. There is definitely a need for a long-term solution and fix. What we are talking about here, and I sit on a couple different boards, is multi-millions of dollars to fix the problem. Henceforth, then, the litigation. And I, and I want to tell you, the town of Andrews deserves to get this right. They deserve to get this, a long-term solution to this problem. Sharing these numbers with you this evening is not, that, you know, it's not, it's not negatively impacting that conversation, because that conversation needs to occur, and for those people in the town of Andrews, that has to happen. Like we've all said, this has been going on for decades, and my heart breaks for those people who have been spending enormous amount of time and resources attempting to get this, this problem fixed. What I want to reassure the community is that we are monitoring this closely and paying very close attention, because I want to ensure people sending their students to Andrews Elementary School that they're safe. If one month comes up and we're not meeting the threshold, I will guarantee you that moment we'll jump into action and do an alternative water source immediately, okay? But there's so much attention brought to this. It was on the gubernatorial debate a couple of weeks ago, where the question was asked about the town of Andrews and the drinking water. Okay, so it is, it is something that we need to rectify long-term, and I'm not trying to negate that. By any stretch, this is not this conversation. But this conversation is, is what's in place is working. Politically, there is a question on who is drawing the water samples, okay? So I will guarantee you as a board, you're going to hear, especially with this presentation now, who has been drawing the water samples. And that's why Alicia talked about that, but this same company's been doing this for a really long time in this process. For the first time, the health department is now in that process, and I'm thrilled. I have great trust for the two of you. If for whatever reason that water sample comes back and is not in alignment with what we're talking about for, to you this evening, we will again jump in immediately, but there is no reason to believe at this point we have any data or any test to signify that that, that water is not safe for us to use. Now, there could be somebody who's been doing independent studies with this, that, or anything else who may beg to differ, but what we have with our local health department is we do not have any information that, that leads to believe, even remotely close to that analogy. Madam I, Dr. Madam I saying that correctly?
Yeah, you're correct.
Okay? And there's been so much attention, Kevin, like you said, drawn to it. It was just time for us to spend some time together in a public meeting going through these details and these results. If we do, if the health department takes an independent water sample, and it's completely different than any of this, then there's a whole nother legal justification to this piece, right? But IDEM has been signing off on these for decades in that process. Did I say, Alicia, am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, yeah. Well, the first ones on here, I believe up until, I believe it was May of twenty-one, IDEM actually pulled the samples here, and then StanTech started doing them, at least at the school. So, yeah.
Right. So IDEM, I, at some point in time was clear up, was even drawing in themselves. I want you to deal in the facts. As a board, we can get in to a lot of emotional pieces about this, but when you're stopped in the community, somebody contacts you, I want you to deal with the facts. I want you to know what we're looking at. I want you to know that I'm monitoring it. I want you to know that, that our local health department is monitoring it, and I hope that puts you in a good spot this evening to know that. Other comments or questions that I have possibly missed here along the way? Okay, well, to Dr. Matt, to Alicia, I say thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. If we have any follow-up questions, I will let you know their independent water sample results as soon as we get them.
Soon as I get it, I will let you know.
Perfect. I'm looking forward to hearing about that. So, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Jeremy, it's your turn, partner. You can come on up and sit in the guest seat. Pat's here. Sorry, Pat, I didn't see you.
I was hiding over there.
Okay.
He's hiding.
You're allowed to do that. What we're going to talk to you about this evening is, you've asked us to bring back to you school board policy ninety-nine fifty-one, which is homeschool athletics participation in IHSAA-recognized athletics and extracurricular activities, all right? In your board packet, and I'm going to bring the two of you this, so you have this in front of you. You have two documents that will show up on the screen. You have the proposed homeschooled athletic participation that we had on the last meeting. You asked us to bring it back. And then I've got the IHSAA bylaw, bylaws in here too, and I'll bring you my computer so you guys can see. You guys, you got both of those there?
I've got.
Okay, you're good.
The basic, yeah.
Okay, all right. So, um, let's do this. Jeremy and Pat, give us some, an overview of this information, what you're looking at, and then we'll start just asking questions. Again, the community needs to understand, this is not an action item. We can't vote on this this evening. But what I will do, and what Chuck will do this evening, is take your feedback from this. And then what we'll do is we'll bring it back to you at the twenty-second school board meeting. So Chuck, I'll turn it over to you so you can lead us through this.
Yeah, and board, every school corporation has a policy. Many, many of them will take the IHS two A policy, and that is their homeschool policy. But superintendents and boards have the ability to take that policy and also add levels to it at their discretion. And tonight, I'll have Jeremy talk a little bit about, number one, the IHS two A policy. Like you said, you have that in your document. There are many places that take that policy and say, here it is. What they have presented you with that, but also their recommendation to go a little bit higher standard, in their opinion, for your consideration on the twenty-second. That particular part, they'll explain why they did that, but also that's the time that, let's understand what homeschool policy is for athletics. And then the second part, once we understand what that really means, and we're hoping for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, then say, why did you go at a different level, a little bit higher credit requirement at Huntington, so on, so on, and they can justify that. So Jeremy, if you want to start us out with, let's discuss first of all, the IHS two A policy, so everybody understands what that is.
Sure, and, and just to give you a little history on where this came about through the IHSA, about, and don't quote me on this now, I'm getting older. Seven or eight years ago, the IHSA brought this policy into their bylaws for the first time. And a lot of that was in response to legislation at the time that came out that said, public schools would be required to take homeschooled students, and if they wanted to try out for your athletic teams, you couldn't stop them from doing that. And they, they did not have to take any classes in your public school. So that was in response to legislation at the time where basically the, the state was going to say, you have to at least allow them to try out as a homeschooled student in your public school of their residence, and they do not have to take a class at your school. So in response to that, the IHSA worked with legislation, and they came up with what we currently have now in the IHSA bylaws, where essentially the student that is homeschooled, if they would like to participate in the public school of their residence, they have to be homeschooled for three successive years prior to them coming into your public school. They have to take at least one class in that public school. This is the IHSA bylaw. And they also have to take the standardized testing that the public school or the state would provide to that student with that. And then also, we would get grades from their homeschool courses to make sure of eligibility, and all that stuff would fall in line with what we do currently with our nine-week grade checks for eligibility for student athletes. So that's what we currently have in the bylaws of the IHSA that is there. Then, as Mr. Brimberry said, many schools have policies on this that tells how many classes a student, if they're homeschooled, and they want to come in and participate in extracurriculars, how many courses they have to take at that particular school. And all schools are a little bit different on how they've done that. I did reach out to our conference schools when we were kind of looking at all of this. And as of right now, it's kind of split half. Four of the schools in our conference only require the one course that the IHSA bylaw show. And then there's our, the other four schools require three or more courses to be eligible to participate in extracurriculars. And, and again, other outlier schools, it's, it's all over the board, from one to five, to select courses that they have to take, et cetera.
Coach Markham, to, for a talking point here, when you say of your residents, what does that mean to, to us or to the IHS two A when you talk about homeschool?
Yeah, so a homeschooled student, just like anyone else within our district, if they fall within our school boundaries and they're homeschooled, and they would like to come and participate, then that would allow them to do that, as long as all the other guidelines are met, because they're in our residence of our school boundaries.
Very good. Questions for Coach Markham? In terms of the IHS two A policy, that, I know you're looking at it. That's been in, I think, seven or eight years, has been kind of the policy that, that the IHS two A set out. And, and that policy's misunderstood many times in our public from what my background's been on this. Some people think you can just jump back and forth. That's, be clear, Jeremy, talk a little bit again about the three years on that requirement.
Yeah, so if a, if a student came to us and said, I've, I've been homeschooling for one year, this last year only, and I've never homeschooled prior to that, they would not be eligible to participate or be a part of our programs. It has to be that they were, they have been homeschooled for three consecutive years prior to coming into that public setting and participating.
Questions from the board, or Mr. Trout, or Mr. Peters, for Jeremy on the IHS two A portion of this?
Yeah, well, as Pat and I kind of talked through this and, and went through it all, we, we kind of felt the, the one class only that the IHSA currently has in their bylaws maybe wasn't enough. Our recommendation with this is three classes. That kind of puts us in the middle of some of the other schools within our conference and surrounding areas. I think there, there's a multitude of ways to look at this, and as, as we were kind of looking at this, this isn't a great number of students that we're talking about. We do, we do field phone calls every year in the athletic office on what are your policies? How many courses would my student have to take if, if they came, because we are homeschooled? And I, I think as we look at it, providing opportunities for students, if they would like to be involved and get involved, we feel that three courses would give them an opportunity to, to do that, get involved, take our courses, get to understand the school culture, because many of these students have never been involved in a school culture, in hopes that maybe those three courses that they take will ultimately say, you know what, no, let's take five, or no, let's enroll full, enroll full-time and be in your school system because of the experiences that we're having, and, and hopefully that's what would come of it, but no guarantee on that.
So on the one full-credit subject, so what would be considered a one-full-credit subject? Anything?
So anything counts as...
Art?
Yeah, anything would count. So we, there are, like Mr. Markham said, there are corporations that specifically say that you need to take core classes in those classes that you're being offered. This would not require that. It, it, it just makes it cumbersome to say, like, if we said three periods and they were here five, six, and seven, that we would have those three courses in the master schedule, five, six, and seven. So the, the course is not specific for our needs. It would just be anything that, that they would want to do.
Let's talk about your requirement, guys. Do they have to go to school all year at Huntington North next year? Didn't they just go in season? What are your thoughts? I, I know you've written it, but go ahead and verbalize that.
Yeah, they, they would be required to go full year.
So can't just show up for a particular season?
Yeah, it's just not a seasonal thing, because then if, you got to remember, if they would come for a season, then leave and go totally homeschool again, they would have to do that for three years, because they've broken that three-year cycle. So that would take them another three years, and they would run out of eligibility by that point. So, I mean, there's some of those safeguards that are built in with that.
So, so if a student would come and play football, met the three-year requirement, came, took three classes, played football, then stopped doing the three, the three courses that we currently have written, we have up, displayed, then, then they wouldn't be eligible for football the next year then, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So Cindy, if you'd put up, sorry, the, the, the proposed school board policy, is that it right there? Yeah, we got it up there right now.
Yep.
That's what's being proposed for your consideration.
So three consecutive years, is that exclusively ninth, tenth, eleventh? Is that, you know, seventh, eighth, ninth?
No, it could be, yeah, it could be the three years leading up to when they're coming into your school. So, so if it's a, if it's a sixth grader, and you want to carry this, this bylaw down into the middle schools, which would be my recommendation, then yeah, they would have had to been homeschooled the previous three years. Now, they, they don't have to fall under the IHSA bylaws like high school students do.
Yeah.
But typically, most schools carry that at, at all those levels, just so that they're aware of what that, what that looks like in the track and everything involved with it.
So point number five then is, and let's get into this, because I think this is where it really boils down to here then. And I want to make sure we're following your lead in this. It says, the student must be enrolled in, attending and passing, very important, a minimum of three full-credit subjects offered within the member school building, and at least one of the three full-credit subjects the student is enrolled in, attending and passing, must be on campus. And there are any remaining full-credit subjects may be virtual through the Huntington County Community School Corporation. Pat, you want to elaborate any on, on that side of this equation then?
Yeah, so we just put that in there as an option for students. If they, for whatever reason, didn't feel like being in the building three periods was doable, that we would offer the option that we offer to all of our students, which is some of our courses virtually through our Apex online program to meet those other requirements. So they could do a combination any way that they saw fit, you know, two and one, one and two, whatever, it wouldn't matter. But one of those would need to be in person, and if, if it was going to be only one or even three, our recommendation to the family would be that those are towards the end of the day, so that they would finish the school day here. the end of the day, so that they would finish the school day here, and be able to go right to practice, rather than having to run them back and forth.
That's kind of what caught my eye, was the two being virtual. But I guess, back up a little bit, do we have a policy right now on homeschool and participation in athletics? Or is that kind of why we're going through this?
Yeah. Here's the background on that, Mr. Roth. It came, actually, a middle school question towards me at some point when we're here, and I went to our local historian named Cindy. And you've had a past practice without the written policy. The past practice has been at the high school, has been five. At the middle school, has been back and forth a little bit, just my background on that a little bit. Depending on who was in leadership role, would that be correct, Cindy? And so, what my past experience and Mr. Trout's has been, is to bring us forward a very concrete policy that we all follow, and that is a board policy, not based on whose leadership role that day, or that year. And for homeschool, to be able to communicate this accurately, I had to do my research, and I went to Cindy. And then I said, I put it on a radar, I'd like to bring this forward to the board for the 2425. So we develop a policy, and I got ahold of Pat and Jeremy and said, you guys got a lot of experience on this at different areas. We did as well, John does as well. Bring us your recommendation from the high school to the board, and begin this discussion. And work session's a great opportunity, so we can talk about it, so we understand it. And if you feel strongly, three, one, five, it doesn't matter to the three of us, he's following kind of a high-end mark based on the NE8, would be my understanding, correct? Most of, half of them are three?
Yeah.
And so...
Well, I was going to say, and thank you, I emailed both of these gentlemen, and you provided me with very thorough, thoughtful responses, and I'll share those with the board. But it looks to me, I think Jeremy, you had said Belmont requires five classes. Is there any distinction between in-person versus virtual at those schools, do you know?
And I didn't ask that specifically when I sent that out. I think that was back in January. I just asked them what their policy was as far as number of classes.
Okay, so Belmont's five, Columbia City's just one, so that's the IHSA minimum, DeKalb the same, East Noble four, Leo New Haven one, and then Norwell five, is what you had sent to me. So, and that's why I asked this to be tabled, is it just kind of really caught my eye that, I mean, I know there's opportunities, there's homeschool teams and leagues
Sure.
that are actually really competitive and good. And there's a lot of Huntington students that are homeschooled that participated in those. And it just felt to me like requiring just one in-person class might deprive a student who's a full-time student of an opportunity athletically. And so, my thought is, it's got to, I like at least three in-person requirement, because you're really kind of a half-time student then. And then, I think, just so the board knows, we get some funding if a homeschool student takes any class. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Take one class, we get one seventh.
Yes, on the tuition.
Valerie, I hate to put you on the spot. Welcome to board meetings. So there you go. What is, just be really specific as you can. I'm sorry to put you on the spot without being prepared, but what is that ADM requirement? Or we can come back to you as you're Googling it there.
I'm not even Googling it. I'm going straight to the state source.
Yeah.
So I can give you 30 seconds.
Yeah. So she'll get that answer to you.
For the board, and I know all of us have been at different corporations that had slight differences on this. My experience, previous experience, the kids who were coming in from homeschool went to a religious homeschool option at a particular church, and they came in, some played soccer and some played basketball. I've seen both of them, where they stayed with the minimum and graduated with a combination. I also saw the basketball come full-time as soon as they got exposure, as Jeremy said, to the culture. The homeschool was a very small amount, but also a very positive experience in my previous district. That child participating was very much a positive for all involved in multiple options that I've had on this. So it was a win-win for the family. They had a personal preference, and we also provided what the law says we will provide. And we went with what Peru thought was adequate, and it was a, this was a very positive policy for our school district.
How many students do we have right now that are?
We have currently one that is homeschooled, that participates in actually multiple sports. And then, yeah, and then, like I said, multiple calls just throughout the year, just asking what is our guidelines. And a lot of those have not matriculated at this point, for whatever reason. But, yeah. Personally, I'm open to conversation on, yeah, what does that look like on the courses? And obviously, I'd leave that up to Pat a little bit more on his end, what that looks like. For me, what's really important is that we have a policy in place, a board-approved policy.
Yes.
So that there's no distinction either way. What does that look like? And communicated correctly to those that inquire.
Well, and that kind of dovetails with, it may not be this policy, but I know the other question that I had raised to both of you was virtual component of it. And I guess just for the board, so we know, how many students do we have that are taking virtual or online classes through Huntington North?
How many students do we have that are taking them as a full-time student? I don't have the exact number in front of me, Matt, but it would be, as their main source and choice of education, it would be less than 20.
And I know, you know, during the pandemic, there was discussion that to have a virtual school, if you had so many students, then you had to have a principal dedicated to that virtual school. Is that accurate?
We're going through that. Actually, the board in May at a work session will hear Mr. McLaughlin and Lynn and Jared come and talk about our proposed virtual option for virtual school in May. But what I would tell you is, the real number is, if you have X number of kids enrolled in virtual, then your funding gets chopped down about 15% if I'm not mistaken. That magic number used to be 100 a while back, and they'll bring to you those proposals in May. We've been working, Pat has been working with IU on a virtual option for that schooling, for kids who are full-time, and how that would look. And you'll hear about that at the May work session. For this purposes, the homeschool is purely focused in athletics right now.
And I also wondered, is there a policy for other extracurriculars in homeschool? So for example, if a student wanted to go participate in show choir or band, is there that same requirement that a homeschool student take a couple of classes with us? Or is that?
That would be a local decision. There would be nothing similar to the IHSA that governs those types of extracurricular activities with band and/or show choir. So, and my knowledge would be, because we don't have one for athletics, we probably don't have one for any extracurricular activity as well.
That's a good question for the board. Co-curricular versus extracurricular is your discussion right now. And many, many places consider co-curricular as just that. If you have a homeschool child who's not wanting to play basketball or something, but they're wanting to be a part of something that takes place during the day, but also has after-school, it's the same group, whether that's the chemistry class they can't get at home, or whether that's drama, or band, or show choir, many districts, because it is co-curricular, allow that one class to take place. What you have to be certain of is what you're talking of is, do you require the same number for that child? Or is it extracurricular for your three, your five, your one, whatever it is? And so, it's been my understanding at Huntington, through at least asking, you have allowed homeschool kids to take classes here and there, depending on their need, which many, many, many schools do. And then, for the extracurricular, you've been, depending on leadership, have been asking five. And so those two need, in your mind, try to place those. Can you make them the same? Absolutely. Have we in the past, through my research here, we have not, and many districts don't.
Valerie, can we jump back to you for a second with the answer to the funding?
So the funding for the attendance of the three courses onsite of homeschool students, which is be just shy of $2,200. And that's on the foundation. So the foundation is our base level without any what's called complexity. So I'm just going, worst-case scenario.
Correct.
Because if there's another factor that adjusts. So with that being said, we do receive 85% of a full-time kiddo for virtual.
Right.
And are most of our virtual at the secondary, like at the high school?
Yes.
Do we still have elementary kids that are trying to do all of it?
Of one situation, we had to work with at an elementary, to my knowledge, that John and I talked a little bit about with Jay. But most of them are secondary.
Okay. I can share with you, March the 15th, this is coming from one of our middle schools, and due to our historian that we have, thank you, Mrs. Gray, for this. And this is what we had in writing that we had been going by. And just let me quote this, if I may, as I sent this to the principal, "Homeschool students may participate in related arts classes if they are not enrolled in another online school. The student must be homeschool only and not connected to any other online school." So this student wanted to come to the middle school, wanted to participate in band, and we allowed that to happen, as long as they're not enrolled in a, quote, "online" or a K-12 online school.
Because that student can't be enrolled
Correct.
in two separate
Correct.
schools.
Yep.
Don't you like how a simple school board policy is, can be so complex?
Well, I think I'm more focused on the virtual. And I'm glad you mentioned that, what is it, May, we're going to have a presentation?
Yeah, you'll have a work session.
Yeah. I mean, just a concern that I had was the rigor of the online offerings that we have now versus the in-person instruction, how that impacts someone. I know, right now, our virtual is all, is it all through Apex?
Yes.
That's about to change, and that's why we're going to do that.
We'll bring you...
Because Apex was more designed as a remedial option.
Correct, correct. And one of the options, Matt, that we'll be bringing you is a rather rigorous option to apply to. But I'll let Pat talk a lot about that at the May meeting.
Okay, so we got just a few minutes to tie up this agenda item, so I'm going to ask you the important question, okay? We would love to bring this school board policy back to you on the 22nd, because we want this to be fully implemented for the 2425 school year. If I can facilitate this discussion, we'll see if I can do this or not. The question now centers around how many classes and virtual or in-person?
Correct.
Okay? And so, I want to put words in Mr. Ross's mouth here, just to start the conversation. I believe that Matt said that what he would like to see is, instead of the options of at least one in-person and two online, or a combination thereof, total three, I believe what Matt was saying is, it would be his desire to see all three be done in-person. Would that be accurate, Matt?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I may qualify it more that it would be more core classes, too.
Okay, so, thank you. So what we're saying is, three core classes is what Matt is saying, because we're trying to get a feel for the group here, so I can possibly bring something back to 22nd. I love the smile, Kevin, I know what that means. So, okay, where are the rest of you? Where are the rest of you in this conversation?
I'm three core classes.
Three, Matt's saying three core, Kevin?
Yeah, because otherwise, I could come in and take welding, art, and PE.
Okay, all right, that's fair.
Is the virtual discussion in May for next school year? Are we talking about another year out yet?
It would be with your approval after the work session, and then to the board meeting, it will be adopted for 2425.
So can this policy wait until after that decision?
It sure can.
Or can it go along in tandem with that decision?
It surely could. I just want to make sure it takes two readings. It takes a reading, a second reading. I just don't want to leave Jeremy and Pat where they're at now. And I'll also be real candid with you, we're getting some elementary questions about this, too. And Jay and I are equating this to a half-day, just so you know.
That's a good point, Kevin.
Because I have a feeling that discussion could change my mind about what you're asking.
Okay?
I mean, if it's a more rigorous online virtual option.
And be cognizant, too, from the guidance standpoint at a high school, sometimes three core is very difficult to do if they're at the end of the day. And so just be aware of that. That's what Jeremy was talking about earlier. Sometimes that is an impossibility, and sometimes it's easily done.
Mr. Melcher, would you be okay, based on Kevin's conversation, that if we listened at the work session in May to the rigor of the virtual piece, would you?
I would be intrigued.
You would be okay with that? I'm just kind of looking at heads.
Intrigued.
Intrigued. I'm taking that as a yes. Okay?
I want to know what happens when somebody out of the county says, but I want to transfer into your school, meet these requirements. When is someone going to challenge that?
Jeremy, you want to talk about that?
They don't live in our county.
I don't live in our county, but in our school district, but want to transfer in. What would you and Pat, how would you answer that question?
As a homeschool?
Yep.
What if they said, I want to transfer in, and I want to take full-time virtual 100%?
But that goes against what the IHSA is saying, correct? Am I interpreting that correctly?
Right, because they're not in your...
So they have to fall into that homeschool.
As a homeschool, yeah. That's why it's kind of a separate entity to virtual.
Altogether.
But if they transferred into this virtual option that we will propose in May, then the IHSA would consider them a Huntington North student, regardless of their residence.
Oh, they would.
If they were enrolled in a neighboring school district and transferred, then the transfer rules for athletics would apply.
Yeah.
Just like if they moved from here to another school in brick and mortar, the same rule would apply, but they could enroll as a virtual student, and they would be categorized as a Huntington North student.
Because we really don't have boundary lines anymore for school.
Essentially.
Correct.
Cash tuition's what we're calling it. Okay, so I'm just looking at heads, nodding, I'm intrigued, okay, that we will postpone this until after the May work session, until we hear about the virtual option, for then to determine whether we would like, where we would like this number to be, whether it's core, whether it's in-person, whether it's a combination of virtual, whatever the case may be. So no, at that meeting, we're going to kind of tie all this together, because I would like to take this to the May board meeting for a first reading. Fair enough?
Certainly.
Because if we would then take it to the June for the second reading, then we're, are you okay, Jeremy, with that ahead of the next school year then?
Yeah, we'll be fine.
Are there, did you say there are two meetings going to take place in June, or is that still one month?
Well, because we'd have two readings, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I'd have to have two readings.
Pat, I asked the questions you answered.
We could have a short.
I was thinking about the budget, in the month that we have two board meetings for the budget.
Right.
It would be before. But we could have a short special meeting for a second reading.
No, we're okay, because we have a June board meeting, which then means we would still beat the July 1, which is what you're looking for, Jeremy.
Yeah, ideally, if we can, but we'll be fine.
Just from a standpoint, if we have students that enrolled because of this new policy, there's a lot of stuff that goes on in the summer with different extracurricular teams.
I understand, I understand.
So that was my question.
Yeah, I think that it would be, I will say this, if we stay at the standard schedule, it would be June 24th. If, depending on that first May meeting, we have consensus, and if you needed an earlier one, we could call a special meeting earlier for all the summer activities, if needed. Okay? Does that make, am I saying that correctly?
Because the IHSA frowns on students coming to participate
I understand.
in a school before they're actually enrolled. So we would just want to be very careful with that.
Yeah. And I would say, if we have, based on the vote at the May meeting, if we have consensus there, then what we could do to help you with all the summer activities, if there's a student or students in play, so to speak, we could consider that option that Matt suggested. Okay? Otherwise, it'd be the 24th of June.
Okay. So, question, if I may, sir. If the current policy presented in its current state, if it's read at the May board meeting and it's amended, does that still count as the first reading?
Joe? Joe?
Wait, say that again.
If the policy that we presented, that we're working from tonight, is the one that goes to the May board meeting for the first reading, and we amend it because it says three virtual, two of which can be, or three classes, two which can be virtual, if that's changed to three in-person only, does that mean it, does that still count as the first reading?
Joe, what's your?
I believe it would because you would vote on it at that meeting to approve the amendment, which would be fully discussed.
Okay.
And voted on.
Well, that would just be your first reading, you wouldn't vote.
We're not approving it.
Right, right, right.
But you're saying, as I know what you're saying as the principal, if I have students inquiring, you're saying it's not been approved yet.
Well, why are we required to do two readings? I guess, what is that based upon? Why couldn't we just vote on it at that meeting?
Because it's changed a policy, correct?
Right, if it's a change of policy, it requires two.
Because I thought in the past, on occasion, we waived first reading.
Maybe it wasn't a change of policy.
Approving it.
I tell you what, Joe, you and I will discuss this and we'll get that to you as a board so you know. And Pat, I'll include you and Jeremy on this.
I don't know how you're going to amend the first reading if you're not voting on it. If you vote on the amendment, then I can see how that.
I think it'd just be a whole, you'd just be presenting a new proposed policy. Unless you're coming back with the same one.
Well, we started that conversation and then it got sidetracked because Mr. Yager said, let's listen to the homeschool or the virtual option. And we never concluded if we wanted it to read three in-person classes.
In all fairness, it's your presentation, so it's your responsibility.
Either way, no matter how we look at it, it would be the first reading. No matter how it's amended, it would be the first reading.
First reading.
I just don't want it to go to the July meeting to have to be voted on.
No.
That's the reason for my question.
And I'll give you my word, because we can't put you and Jeremy and our coaches in that spot. Okay, we just can't.
Sure.
We have to have a decision to you at the June meeting. And I thought that's where you were going.
Absolutely.
But what I would say to you is, we have to get you a decision in June, to be fair, at the absolute latest. To be fair to you guys with the upcoming school year. And I get, Jeremy, where you're going, because each team does something throughout the summer.
Sure.
There's not a squad that we have that's not.
Right, yeah, they're all starting in June.
And I would say, based on the first reading, you guys are going to have a really good indication of where we're tracking with this decision.
Agreed.
In May. And I would be personally very comfortable, you can't say this has been adopted yet, but this is the direction that the school board's going based off that May, that May meeting. I'll get with Joe and we'll talk about that. Because let's just say, I think, Pat, what you're saying to me is, we think we have a first reading, it's approved by the majority of the board, and in June it tweaks again. I think that's what you're saying.
Sure.
That's what you're asking me. If it tweaks again in June, I think what I would say to you is that, since it's been through the first reading process, as long as it gets approved, it's a second one. Even if it's somewhat different, it's still been an approved policy with the board because it's been through the two readings. But Joe and I will look at that legally to make sure that that happens.
Sure.
But we deserve to give you an answer in June. We can't put you going through the July and doing this.
No, that's right.
Okay, that just can't happen, okay?
Perfect.
So what I believe, we have a thought process here is, is that we're going to wait to hear the virtual school option in May, bring this back for a reading. But understand, Jeremy and Pat, when you do this virtual, we're going to tie, I'll tie this, the school board policy into that conversation, okay? There'll probably be a virtual school and then we'll just come right into homeschool policy, okay? Fair enough?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Yeah?
Chuck over there calls him an old historian. Chuck's going to need flowers and chocolate.
I said wise historian. Let the record reflect.
Okay.
Thanks for pointing that out, Gary. Appreciate you.
All right, last one. Watch the clock here, we're right at 7:20. District calendar, okay? I am going to state where I thought we were and then have you help me understand where we are, okay? Based on the last meeting, I took from that with the district calendar because we were having, and this, really, when I talk of district calendar, I don't want our community to be concerned. We're not talking about start dates, end dates, school times, all of that stuff. We're really honed in on the Wednesdays, is really what we're honed in on. I took away from the last work session that my job was to get a survey put together, one for the staff, one for the community, and get those results back to you, okay? Within that. Now, if I'm missing something, please tell me within that. So what I'm interested in, for you as a board, are where are we with this district calendar for 24-25? And I assume that what you want to talk about are Wednesdays. Is that accurate and correct? Bringing it up.
I think so, yeah.
Okay?
And I just wanted to be clear, we have not voted on what next year will look like. Is that accurate?
No.
I mean, there's been no vote on whether we keep the two-hour delays once a month next school year, keep the 30-minute delays. That's still, that's to be voted on at the next meeting.
Well, as it stands right now, we are following the current calendar, which is posted, which would be 30-minute delays and two hours.
Right, but we haven't voted on whether there's a change or not.
I thought that this was a union thing too, where the contract didn't allow us to change the two-hour.
Well, no, so at the last board meeting, we voted on a waiver that Jay presented to us. And that was just to preserve the opportunity to do the two-hour delays next year. If that's where we wanted to stay.
So.
Accurate or not accurate?
Yes, okay, so here's what I want to say, is up on the screen in your board packet, okay? Up on the screen in your board packet, what we have is the school board approved 24-25 district calendar. Also in your school board packet, I believe the 25-26 is also in there. So you'll notice on the Wednesdays, we still have 30-minute delay starts, two-hour delay starts, okay? Now, Jay has submitted a waiver to the state of Indiana for the two-hour delays. Based on the conversations we have, this would be the last year that we would do that. And what you've encouraged us to do is move off those two-hour delays for the 25-26 school year and look at two full days for professional development in lieu of the two-hour delays, okay? If I'm not correct, stop me at any point in time. I'm looking at faces here.
You are correct, but we also at least want to take, or whether Smeckens, whether this coming school year, which will be 24-25, if we were more aggressive, we could get rid of the two-hour delays this next school year.
That's not, that's not what Jay and I were going on.
No.
No. So that's not what our recollection was. Jay, am I correct?
Correct. And we're not, we're not going to be able to do the Smeckens writing initiative if we do not have those two-hour delays in place.
Which is why we're talking about the 25-26 is moving off those two-hour delays.
Correct.
Okay, so we're not able to do that this next year.
For the 24-25 school year, we are locked in with those two-hour delays. The reason why we had to do the 1003 flexibility waiver at the time that we did, that resolution signed by the board members had to be in April the 5th. So that was the timeline that we were under. So that then would assure us for 24-25 to have those two-hour delays, that we could roll out that K-12 writing initiative.
Now, what Jay and I are working on the following year is moving away from those two-hour delays for PD. I'm just saying, that's in the works as we speak right now, is moving away from those, from moving from those two-hour delays. Now, the other discussion that, which we can still have, which is fine, we can do, is the 30-minute delay starts. If it's your desire as a board to see us move away from that time, that's something that still could be done for next year. Jay and Chuck, if I'm talking out of turn here, talk to me. But that's, that could still, if that's your desire to move away from those 30-minute delay starts, we could still do that, okay? Would we have to adapt and adjust? Yes. But it could still be done if that's your desire to do that. So I don't want to lead you one way or another in that conversation, but that's still, that's still the process in there, okay? We haven't, I haven't gotten it out yet. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and I apologize, I thought we deserved the possibility of doing two-hour delays. Still, if we wanted to, but.
You can always, I'm going to say this to you. You, let me just say this crystal clear. You can still vote today, or not today, not today, next week. You can still have the option to vote to do away with the two-hour delays. I want you to know that. You can do that. You can also vote to do away with the 30-minute delay starts. So if it's your desire as a board to wipe the slate clean on Wednesdays, we can set that up. I mean, you have, I want you to know that that's always, always something that can be brought up. We are at the 11th-plus hour to do that. But you still, I don't want you to walk out of here this evening and understand that you don't have that option available to you. You have that option available to you in April.
That's what I wanted to talk, I didn't know if there'd been any discussion with Smeckens about the curriculum writing that you described to me, whether that's modifiable to a one-day professional development versus two-hour.
We would have to, and I'm going to go back and say it to you again. If it's a desire of the board to do away with the two-hour delays, then we'll have to go back to the drawing table. But that could, that, I don't know what the answer to that question would be setting here this evening. But understand, I don't want you walking out of here this evening not thinking that you don't have the availability afforded to you to vote to change those Wednesday schedules next year. You absolutely can do that, okay? And we're going to follow your lead on that. And we'll make it work at whatever level, okay?
But we have signed a contract with Smeckens.
Yes, but I have a signed contract. But I'm just saying to you is we'll do our best to do whatever.
Well, that's what I was asking, just for, yes, we have a signed contract for that PD. Could that be reworked and they still provide that PD, but just concentrated?
If that's your desire for us to bring that back to you two weeks from today, we can do that, okay?
And if they say, no, we can't do that, then that answers my question.
So what we'll do is, based on this conversation, that's what's hard about work sessions. I'm trying to read people here. What Jay and I will do is we'll bring you back options on the 22nd, okay?
And I don't know if anyone else has talked, I mean, I sent out some emails to some teachers that I talk to on a regular basis about this. Because I know there's the education side and then there's the practical parent side of the half-hour delay and the two-hour delays. And, you know, I got great feedback from some of our educators. You know, the ones I heard back from said they really do utilize that 30-minute Wednesday. And they reminded me that when we went from teaming at the middle school level and then we made other adjustments, we have, over time, taken away some of their collaboration time. A lot of them do use that 30 minutes in the morning on Wednesdays. Talk to each other about students, talk about meeting the needs of certain students and all of that. And then I did, a lot of them did say, they would, if they had to trade, they would keep the 30-minute and go to the full-day PD.
Right.
With some interesting reasons. I mean, one, they said doing the two-hour delay PD, they're not really, if they're focusing on the PD for that two hours, but then they've got a school day coming up having to focus on as well. And if they just had the full-day PD, they could really just focus on PD for that entire day thinking about what's going to happen in the classroom later that. And then balance all that with the imposition. I would just encourage everybody between now and then to vote on it, just to talk to anyone.
I did much of the same what you did, Mr. Roth, and heard very much the same thing you heard, which is, they really appreciate the opportunity to use the 30 minutes productively. Not a waste of time. Take a lot of pride in their work. And in the same token, the two hours is very beneficial. But yeah, then they've got to go jump in class. So they were, they were more hopeful for maybe a one-day that I spoke with.
Well, and I think the utilization of the 30 minutes is a testament to our administrators here and our building principals, that they are making sure that that time is being used. Because it'd be easy not to. That time set for collaboration.
I think the tough spot that you all are in is, I'm fully anticipating when a survey goes out, I've talked to teachers about this when I've been going out to each building and doing the Q and As once a semester, that I'm fully anticipating staff's going to say this to you and the community, parents and providers are going to say this to you. And I think they're going to be completely opposite in what they like to see happen on Wednesdays. That's what makes your job enormously tough here is because most parents are telling me that they would prefer that Wednesday alternate schedule, whether we're talking two-hour delays or 30-minute delays, go away. I think then the parent, the teachers and the staff are going to tell you something opposite of that, which is what's going to be really intriguing and interesting for the seven of you in making that decision along the way. But what Jay and I can do is we can bring you back that information with that. I always hate to bring you an agenda item that doesn't have a recommendation, but I don't know how to write you a recommendation for this agenda item. So if you see it and it's a little different than what we most normally do, please understand, I'm not, I'm not in any way, shape, or form trying to put you in a no-win situation. But I kind of think that's basically where you're at, is in, is in that situation in regards to this conversation. What you feel is the best thing to do for our community.
What's your schedule on sending the survey out?
Well, I guess it's ramped up here a little bit. I'll try to figure out how I can squeeze that in someplace. Looking at this week's schedule, makes it rather intriguing to try to figure out how to get that. But I'll get it out, okay? I'll get it out.
Board, I would add to this conversation that you have a lot of experience in a lot of different corporations with multitude of ways to help students be successful academically and otherwise. Regardless of how, whatever your preference is on this, I assure you, the end result will be student achievement. How we get there is what we're talking about in terms of our PD. But it's a win-win for you, even though it's a tough call because everybody sitting up here's done this multitude of ways and had a lot of success in a multitude of ways. So if you end up in a A versus B or C versus either one, know this, we'll go to the drawing board and make sure that happens and help the kids be successful, I promise you.
Anyone else have a comment or thought about this topic that you'd like to share before Jay, Chuck, and I go back and put some details together? Seriously, you know how to reach us? We'll bring this back. I cannot impress upon you enough that for next school year, the 22nd is literally one month, April 22nd is one month to go in school, okay? The last student day is May, is it May 22nd? Am I saying that correctly? We literally have a month to go in school after, during that next board meeting. And so, just know that I'm going to push us for a decision, whatever it is, at that April 22nd meeting. And so, just know that I'm gonna push us for a decision, whatever it is, at that April 22nd meeting. If I can get that survey out, Kevin, I'll do my darndest. I can't make you any guarantees because I was doing the survey this summer.
I mean, even if you can't get that out, I think how you described the two.
I have, I have no, I have no question to you based on, I go to every building, talk to all the staff that come voluntarily. I can tell you that they're widely supportive of the current Wednesday schedule. Yes, they would like to see us move the two-hour delays to full days, which then entail, causes us to start to move that first semester a day and move that second semester a day. Okay, that's all it takes. I have zero doubt from the community overwhelmingly, it's going to be, if there wasn't an alternate schedule on a Wednesday, that's best for us. I just, I can tell you unequivocally, that's, it's not gonna take a survey for me to tell you that. People who are talking to me most overwhelmingly, that alternate schedule is a real strain on childcare-related issues, and there's a series of other things that go in with that. But that's, there's just no question from our community, that's gonna be the feedback. It's not gonna take me a survey to tell you that. I just know, and I've told, I've been very open with the teachers and say, "It's just gonna be two opposite ends of the spectrum of this." Heard with that. Jay, are you, would you agree?
Absolutely.
With this beast, too? And so, I want you to know that, okay? It is 7:37, I'm off seven minutes, okay? Sorry about that. But this was a great discussion on a couple different topics this evening. I appreciate you guys. We'll see you again on April 22nd? 7 o'clock, school board meeting, okay? Thank you.